Hey, I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:10 on the 10th of January 2023. So this meeting, obviously, of the Planning Commission. And we will hold off a few seconds because our member just arrived.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Kevin. Perfect timing, Kevin.
This is how long it takes when I get done at church.
Okay. All right, well, we'll start and then, right? Do I have any additions, deletions, or changes for the agenda items? May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review and approval of the November minutes. If you all recall, we didn't meet in December. Any changes?
Sure, you spelled your name wrong under zoning administrator's report. You dropped an R. And you spelled my name wrong just below there.
For some strange reason.
That's okay.
My, my check insists on changing it, and I apologize.
That's okay.
See if I can go in and get it.
When I go to say T-Matic sometimes, you put the T in the M and it tries to change it to trademark.
So, thank you. Any other changes?
The very bottom on the left-hand side, there's J triple question mark.
I think that was me.
Okay, that's Jill.
Yeah, the question mark was there just for that reason.
Yep, okay. That's all I've got.
And then, three lines up from the bottom, draft zoning, I believe it's.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes? Right, and may I have a motion to approve of changes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. And, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, administrators' report. The annual report says that there are 50, that there were 50 permits issued. And on the date that was written, that was correct. There were actually 51 because a request came in after that. So there were 51 permits issued for last year. So that would be 2022. And as of today, the 10th of January 2023, I've issued one. So that's about it so far. We only had two new housing starts last year, which was reported to the census because they are keeping track of all of that. Everything else seemed to be a majority of Vex additions, subtractions, and that type of thing. And proposed zoning regulations, I sent you all a copy of what the DRB gave us back. I'm sorry. Rutland Regional Planning Commission gave us. And.
This was just Ed, though, right? Not the whole commission?
It was just Ed, but I spoke to him about sending it to the VCLT. And quite frankly, he said, you know, that's our job is to go through it, just as much as the VCLT. And of course, part of our dues to the RRPC is for them to do this type of thing. And Ed has, as you well know, stepped on his executive director to planer, which is his first love and his expertise. And he went through it. And he and I talked about some of the changes in there. In there, and you can see, and you won't have the matrix of the changes that he suggested in the packet. So. I didn't give you a copy of any changes because I thought it best to discuss anything first and then send you a revised 24th draft. So, any comments?
He put, you know, for ZA to know on the cover. You know, he talks about variance waivers, ADUs, PUDs, SFHAs, group homes. Was there a discussion about that and whether he felt like those should be included in the revised regulations?
No, that was just his little note to remind me. The variance waivers, he just said you can use interchangeably variance and waivers and everything, but that was about it. Same thing with the AUDs, PUDs, SFHAs, except the FHA. Yeah, the F-H-F-S-F-H-A.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah, several times. Was the hazardous, flood hazardous. And he suggested that we might want to take what is online and add it in as another appendix because he said it is part of the zoning. And it would be all in one place. And he highly recommended that we add it as another appendix. It's already been approved. It's already up online. It would just be an addition to this.
That the special flood hazard area?
Yeah. The S-F-H-A.
So, I mean, PUDs are optional, but those aren't ever, you know, we don't have anything in our regulations about PUDs.
No.
Did he ever recommendation? I mean, you said optional, but did he just, you know, say that was something we should talk about?
No.
Is that anything anybody in the town is interested in?
Not particularly.
Is that, what about everybody else?
And same thing with group home. He said, we don't mention anything about group homes. And we do have several, Serenity House being one.
Yeah.
And, well, Wallingford House, no, because Wallingford House is individual.
They're not a group home, it's a senior living facility.
Right.
His place in Wallingford.
Yeah. He said, we do have, we do have some of them in town. Did we want to address it in any way? And I really don't think we need to.
Having licensed by the state?
Yeah.
So I don't know that we need to stick our nose in because if we conflicted with state, we know where, how that would go.
But planned unit development, that's regulated at the local level.
Yeah, and that would be, as he, as he and I talked about it, he would see that would be more like a subdivision. And he said, you don't have the land for subdivisions. You know, he was, of course, thinking of big lots where it would be, say, up in Burlington where you have a subdivision named, and you name it and things like that. But if you look at what we have here, unless we break up any of the farms in the area, we really don't.
I don't know. But except that, I mean, so, you know, subdivisions, but the town dictates what triggers that. So in some municipalities, anything over three lots is a planned unit development. So that's not actually a big subdivision. It's not like a 20 or 30 or 50. It's, that could happen on, you know, in South Wallingford or East Wallingford. There's definitely places that could happen. So I guess that's why I wanted to ask. Because we do have parcels that could be subdivided into.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that, that level.
We do, but that would also be a Development Review Board issue because right now each zone has a minimum amount of land.
Except we don't have the, the regulations that are relevant to a PUD that would guide the DRB's decision.
Well, again, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
So, do we want to add anything like that in there?
Or maybe not even add, just maybe look at it to see. Because, I mean, I know what PUDs are. I'm pretty familiar with them. I don't know if everyone else has had a chance to look into what, what they are and what regulations look like for them. So maybe it's just a, should we, you know, I could bring in some example town PUD regulations that folks could look at and see if it's something that looks applicable.
I'm curious to know because it's not like it can't happen tomorrow. You know, we need to be prepared for that.
Well, especially with the way farms are.
Exactly.
Are going, that there, it's, it's really hard for them to.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment about item nine? You know, he said, you know, that we can't make landscaping for solar more restrictive than commercial development. But that doesn't mean it can't be different.
You know, I looked at that and then I looked at what we had written. We did say that if, you know, we didn't make it more general because we said, or a place where you'd be storing, you know, a large amount of equipment visible. I forget exactly how it's, how it's written, but it, it did make it generalized enough, I think, to pass muster.
Yeah, and I think it's absurd to think that regulations would be the same for everything, whether they apply or not. That's how we get messy.
Yeah, I did, I.
I just, I liked what we wrote. And I'm very content to leave it there.
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
Could we apply the same standard to commercial facilities? I mean, actually, it's, it's his problem that it's, did he maybe confuse that it's not in the renewable energy section, but it's in, you know, we've called it green serviced areas? You know, so that's actually, and it does say, Kevin, to your point, commercial developments. I mean, it does say commercial development.
Right.
So maybe that just should be, you know, maybe he just didn't read that clearly.
I've got a bad impression.
Yeah, I think we could skip, we can eliminate that line.
So you don't want to make any changes to that?
I, I would prefer not.
I agree.
Okay. No change. Okay. He and I did talk about the suggested change for number one, where we keep on saying, we've been here based on the current. Keeps on saying the act, the act, the act. And I know a lot of us have said, well, what's the act? Because how many of us read the introduction chapter? So his suggestion was you either keep it all the act as it is or you go ahead and you reference 24, Chapter 117, which is every time we say the act, we could reference it. So my suggestion would be just a blanket. Forget calling it the act and put it in. Reference the whole, reference it entirely. It's just, I mean, digitally wise, it's not going to use up that much paper, if any. And quite frankly, I think, and he and I talked about it. And I think it would be a lot easier for people if they want to find out what the act is. It's right there.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
The amount of paper you're going to save is going to be worse by the questions that will come up.
Yeah, so I, with the board's blessing, I'll go ahead and just do a global. Every time the term, the act comes in, I'll just change it off. But that would warrant a change of explanation, I believe. Yeah, but not really. Section 101, where it's under the purpose, where it has the act in quotes, we just take it out. And so it's referred right back to 24 VSA, Chapter 117. And 403. Okay, and the existing small lots, he says it's not required in statutes. It is mentioned in the statutes then, because I did look them up. And it does say that we, we can reference them or not. And this is for lots that are less than an eighth of an acre with an minimum width and dimension of 40 feet. So it's up to us if we want to keep it in or if we want to keep it out. We do have some lots that are, we have one in particular, I know. But we do have a few lots that are less than, that are just about one-eighth of an acre.
I don't have a problem keeping it in.
I agree.
And 412. He suggested adding five is the utilization of renewable energy resources. So that would be, his feeling was it would help the DRB make decisions if it's in there.
Which one are we talking about now?
I'm talking about section 412. Conditional use approval. No zoning permit shall be issued by the zoning administrator for use of any structure that requires conditional use approval until the Development Review Board grants such approval. In considering its action, the board shall make findings on general and specific standards, hold hearings, and attach conditions, if any, as provided for in the act. The general standards which must be met are that any proposed conditional use shall not adversely affect, one, capacity of existing or planned community facilities, two, the character of the area affected, three, traffic on roads and highways in the vicinity. And now it says four, zoning regulations then in effect. The suggestion was we add five, utilization of renewable energy resources.
I'm fine with that.
Shouldn't this also include the scenic beauty, the scenic and natural beauty of the area? As opposed to just the character?
No, I think, I agree with you.
Okay. So you're talking number two, the character of the area affected?
Uh, yeah, well, I'm, I'm saying that either as an extra or separate, but the, like specifically noting the scenic and natural beauty, which is a criteria for Act 250 and energy projects as well.
How would the board like that?
I like it.
Don't have a problem with it.
No problem.
Yeah, but do you want to add it on or make it number six?
I think I would make it number three and then, right, because it kind of fits with two. Scenic beauty and then just, you know, traffic is four. Zoning is five.
Yeah.
So the characters, character and scenic beauty?
Character, you could say.
In keeping?
Yeah, the character of the area affected. It's basically, we're just want to, we don't want to adversely impact the scenic and natural beauty of the area. So I don't know if that's a separate or an add-on.
I like it as a separate.
What is the board's pleasure?
Separate.
I'm fine with separate.
Okay, may I have a motion to make it number six?
That we're making number three.
Yes. Or we can re, insert it as three, in keeping with scenic and natural beauty of the area and.
Or, yeah, the, because it's like, shall not adversely affect the scenic and natural beauty of the area. I think that's all you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shall not affect, yeah.
Yeah, because that's what, that's what the lead-in is. Proposed conditional use shall not adversely affect scenic and natural beauty of the area.
And you want that as the new number three?
I think that makes sense.
Yes.
So we have one, two, four, five, six, insert. All right, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will do that. Right, um, so that's for 12. Okay, um, the other thing that he suggested was that we actually review the standards for site plans. I mean, it is up online on the statutes, but Castleton, apparently, in the new regulations have put in exactly what the standards are for site plans. And he suggested that we take a look at those and do, and match what they have. So I can do that. And which basically means that people won't be able to put it on napkins and things like that anymore.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
I'm not arguing that. So, section 413. I can take a look at what they have and then go ahead and add in what the site plans are for Castleton and add that in. And then, of course, discussion afterwards. And I do believe the statutes, there's something mentioned in the statutes. And if there are, if there is, I'll see if I can reference it. 417 is, is what we talked about earlier on the flood hazard protection area standards. And he, as you can see in there, said you might want to just add it on as a appendix. It's already been approved, so it would just be added because he said it makes much more sense to have it in the zoning regulations than it does anywhere else. So.
Good with that?
Okay. Okay, 421. The APS are now the RAPs. Those are the, that's the only change in there. So.
I think that in section 420, I think that the Agency of Transportation isn't issuing letters of intent anymore. I can look into that, but I just, I don't think that's something they're doing.
Okay.
I'll, I'll check on that.
Intent for what?
Uh, access onto a state highway. So, you know, you'll send it, you have your project and you send it to them. And they used to send a letter of intent saying, we looked at this and we will approve it. And I, I think they've stopped doing that pretty recently.
That would be reasonable. Yeah.
Why? I don't know why, but I can ask.
Okay. I know the town highway, obviously, if you're going to put a driveway in, you have to have the town approve it. So even if the state wouldn't approve it onto the state highway, the town would still have to approve it.
Right.
So. Okay, I'm losing. All right, um, 421, we already talked about. 427. Seven. The term is no longer alternate energy, it's renewable energy. So I'll go through and go ahead and do a general change on any of that. That's okay with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and in Article 5, one of the things that he and I discussed and he said it might help with the way we have the table is instead of just saying on line 598, where it just says permits, is to use the term administrative permit, which would be the permit that's issued by this office. There are two types of permits. There's the administrative that I can do because it's permitted. And then there's the Development Review Board permit that is still issued from this office, but with the blessing of the Development Review Board. And he suggested that we make that very clear.
Is the Development Review Board a conditional use permit usually? So then maybe it's administrative permit and conditional use permit are the categories?
Administrative permit is in a, in a, in a zone that can be issued from this office.
No, I know, but I'm saying, are those the two categories, right? So maybe we label them as such.
We can do that. Yeah, so administrative permit is issued by the zoner, zoning administrator, and the DRB issues conditional use.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, yeah, because that would.
Clarify. And then he said, and then go through the table if indeed we want to keep the table. Some people have said they don't like the table. Some people said they do like the table. I mean, I'm hearing comments. But he said, in that case, then you, instead of just writing permit in DRB, you could say a permit or administrative and then DRB and then separate the two. And he said that would maybe perhaps alleviate some confusion that people have when you say a permit. Because, let's face it, to most of us, myself included, a permit's a permit, but it really does make a difference. So if that's okay, I'll go ahead and add those changes in. And 501, oh, he also said on 501, on any of these, 501, 2, 3, 4, and so on and so forth, where we have the following uses are permitted. We've already said it in the table, we're saying it again. Quite frankly, I like the idea of repeating it because sometimes people don't look at tables and they want to see the language.
Right.
Yeah, and again, we're not using up paper, per se. And I really like the idea, and this is a personal, and some people have said, yeah, because it's all here. I don't, and the main thing is, as we discussed many months ago, each one of these sections is on its own piece of paper, more or less. So if somebody wants to know what 502 is all about, they can just print out 502 without saying, okay, now I have to go back to the table and figure all this out. So.
I agree with Ed.
Get rid of it?
I think it's, I think it's redundant. If that is clearly stated at the very beginning, I, I personally think that it's unnecessary. But that's, that's my personal opinion.
I'm happy with it the way it is. I mean, I. I don't think, you know, I think when Ed goes through it, he reads it five or six times and he starts, you know. But no one else is going to read, well, not no one else, but very few people are going to read through the whole thing and feel like they're being bored to death with a repeated statement.
But it is the very first place you have to look. I mean, in order to even know what you want to do, you have to come to this area and first look at it. And I think if it's kind of, I think maybe one thing that would help is if this table was not, I think if this table was reported, I, I have some trouble with the reading this table also. But if this was reformatted a little and you had it here and then like maybe a blank space and then the, the table, maybe it would be more clear so it wasn't all, you know, together. But it's, you know, that's just my, that's my, only my personal opinion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't follow. What do you mean by more space?
So if this was reformatted slightly so that the, the table didn't start on the same page.
Ah, okay.
And that the, so that, this maybe was white space under here and we had that, that piece that says if, or it's at the top. I just think that maybe with some reformatting, it could be more clear. That would eliminate the, the need to restate this every time. But I understand why folks think that it's important. But, I mean, we can put it to a vote. I know I'll lose, but.
I'd like to see it reformatted because I was confused by it initially. Like, we're just trying to streamline this.
Yeah.
And just, why not? See what it looks like reformatting.
I could take a crack at that, Erica, if that's helpful.
And then we can decide then?
Yeah, or, I mean, I can send you a soft copy or, I think I know what you want. Basically, the narrative on page 16 with the table starting on page 17.
I think so, but I'm not exactly sure. It's kind of like the thing, it's like I kind of want the pieces to, I don't know. I think in my mind, that's what I, but I'm not sure that's actually quite right. But that's sort of an idea where it's maybe just, there's a little bit more visual clarity and separation that would allow folks to more easily read it.
Okay, that's, I'll take a crack at it and you can take a crack at it and then.
We can compare notes. Right, sounds good.
No problem. Okay, super. All righty, so those are pretty much all the. So, those are pretty much all the changes that Ed had in there, as you well know. But I've had comments on, on the definitions, not from Ed, but from others. And one comment was, I believe, somebody asked, somebody asked what a family was because one of the things that we have is single-family housing in these, sorry, take a look. One-family dwelling, two-family dwellings, for example, and where we have multiple residents, multiple-family dwellings. And they were asking, so what constitutes a family? And.
In terms of a multifamily dwelling unit?
Or a single, or even single family. When you say family, they want to know what's a family. They're, they're, the key is the word family.
Yeah, so like a single, I mean, it's just the occupants, I mean, that's a, I haven't seen that, I don't think, does anybody ever define that? Family, like, single family?
Yeah.
Welcome to the new zoning.
It's interesting. In fact, on the packet that you had today, I looked at a couple of, well, I spent a good two hours going through there because they kept on saying the census. And I kept on thinking, okay, well, the U.S. Census Bureau has defined what they term family. No, they haven't. The statutes define family as a family, but they don't go into what makes up a family anymore.
Wouldn't a family be one or more persons? You know, a single family could be occupied by one person.
That's obviously true, but they're wanting to know what is a family.
One or more persons.
No, that's, I mean, that's, that's what everyone is thinking and saying and whatnot. But what happens if you have like roommates? Are they a family?
That's where housekeeping unit comes in.
So, the new term apparently is housekeeping unit.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
So, anyway.
That's weird.
I agree. So, looking at, believe it or not, Rocket Mortgage, because it, they're a mortgage company. So, what are they defining as single and double-family units and everything? In your packet, I've got some definite, several definitions. And one is dwelling, single-family means a detached building designed for or occupied exclusively for residency purposes by one family or housekeeping unit. And that could be, you know, roommates. And then you can see the other one, then there's, and I did the same thing for multifamily dwelling, is a structure that means more than one separate residential dwelling unit, which is used, occupied, or intended to be used or occupied in whole or in part as a home residence of one or more persons.
Ooh.
Yeah, I know.
That's messy.
That doesn't, that doesn't work either.
No, no. But I put in, just for the fun of it, what's the difference between a single-family home versus a multifamily home? To see if maybe somebody came up with something. And if you go to the second paragraph under that where it says, "A single-family home is a freestanding structure that shares no common walls with another residence. And a multifamily home contains separate residential units within a single structure." I kind of like those.
I do too.
Yep.
It's clear and simple.
Yeah. Yeah, and it differentiates a single-family home from a townhouse or something like that, which would have a shared wall or duplex.
Right, right. Exactly.
So, if we.
Are we going to have to define those too?
Duplex, I mean, probably.
We might have to.
Duplex and, it might make sense.
Townhouse and duplex.
You know, or, you know.
Well, a duplex would be a multifamily home.
Yes, it would.
Triplex.
Triplex would be a multifamily home. And technically, a townhouse would be a multifamily home, except that they're sharing, I mean, townhouses might be a separate unit. But what I'm.
Now, so townhouses, something's joined there. We lived in a townhouse that was.
Yeah, it's usually a common wall.
I think we have to define the shared wall thing.
Well, yes and no. I, I don't want to get so technical that we get caught up in all of this. But my suggestion is where, on page 41, where we did define family, which was a legal term. Okay, it came from the law libraries, which is one or more persons living, sleeping, cooking, eating in the same premises as a single housekeeping unit. And it says, "Provided that all members are related by blood, marriage, adoption." I don't think so anymore. I, I would just get rid of the term family.
Provided that. Just get rid of the provided that. Everything after there is nothing but trouble.
And can we get rid of the housekeeping? Like, what does that mean?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I guess that implies that there's, it's not a commercial.
Yeah, I guess.
arrangement, I guess.
So.
Yeah.
You do your chores and we'll share chores instead of you pay me to clean up after you. I don't know.
Yeah, some people don't do chores and.
Let's not go there.
So, what my suggestion, I mean, because people, people, we changed. I mean, we didn't, when we started this, there wasn't any really big thing about tiny houses. And we now got tiny houses. But I would, I would try to keep this, quite frankly, as simple as possible. And I wouldn't even put a family, a definition for family in there because really what we want to focus on, I would believe, and I could be wrong, is the unit.
Yeah, the structure of it.
The structure, not who lives in there.
Yeah.
So, you know, my, again, I kind of like this where it says, "A single-family house is a freestanding structure that shares no common walls with another residence."
It's as simple as could be.
Yeah. And then the multi contains separate residential units within a single structure. And just let it go.
Can we include just town?
It's up to you.
Back in the day, I think there was, someone was talking about townhouses. And that could pop up.
It could, yeah.
That's, you know, just put it included in there.
Well, if you go down, if you go down to the end, it says, "A residential unit here is defined as a room or group of rooms intended for occupancy by a single family." Because it defines what a residential unit is. "The units can be adjacent either horizontally or vertically, and they typically share a heating system and public utilities such as water and sewage," typically. "But apartment buildings, condominium complexes, and duplexes are all considered multifamily homes." So, if you, if you want to more or less define what a residential unit is, which we don't really have in there, then I believe that might take care of the problem.
Right.
But again, it's up to the board.
Okay, so I just, I was just quickly looking up, you know, South Burlington, Chittenden County, they've got their, their regulations are 382 pages. We don't, that, we're not them. I just wanted to see if they defined it. They say, "Families see household." And what they say for household is.
Housekeeping unit?
If I can follow H. Household is defined as a group of between one and four, so they're very technical. "A group of between one and four unrelated individuals or one or more individuals related by blood, marriage, adoption, and/or fosterage occupying a dwelling unit and living as a single housekeeping unit. For the purpose of inclusionary zoning, the household size is the total number," we don't do inclusionary zoning, but, and for housing unit, they refer to dwelling unit. And they define dwell, which I think is kind of what you were just getting at, Erica, is they define dwelling unit. "A building or portion thereof designed, used, or constructed or occupied as separate living quarters for one household, which includes independent and exclusive cooking, sleeping, and sanitary facilities for a household and direct access to the unit from the outside of the building through the common hall." They go on to define dwelling, single-family, multifamily, two-family, townhouse or rowhouse, and dwelling unit attached. So, I think that we don't need that.
Wow.
But that's just a reference of what's, you know, the, the super-serious, maybe over-serious communities are doing in our state.
Well.
Comparison.
Yeah, well, it's up to, it's up to the board, but I think I'd like to keep it as simple as we possibly could agree.
I like the simplicity of it.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask a question though.
Sure.
Can we eliminate the word family entirely? And just say, like, purposes by one housekeeping unit? One household, one or the other?
Yeah, but I guess we could, but to be honest, it's usually, everything I've looked at is usually defined by single-family, multiple-family.
I'm okay. I just asked.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be great just to have a dwelling. And sometimes they say, "Single-family dwellings" instead of single-family units. Or, and sometimes I've seen it read as, "Single-family residences," so. You know, but it's always single as opposed. And the main thing seems to be, a single unit, however you want to define it, has no common wall with anything else. It's freestanding.
I think it's a common term, single-family home. I mean, you know, the economic reports, you know, when they talk about housing starts, that's
That's a.
The type, the type of terms they use. I think if, no, that we want to get too politically correct to make things confusing.
Well, truthfully, I'm very surprised that the census doesn't have a definition of it because they're the ones that keep on asking for it, but they don't.
Because then you get into bedrooms and bedrooms. Yeah, consider a bedroom with a closet and how many bathrooms and how many bathrooms are permitted and, oh my goodness.
But to Kevin's point, what if we eliminated the definition of family but defined a single-family dwelling unit?
Yeah.
So then that gets, I guess that just gets wrapped up into that one definition.
We can do that if you.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there to.
So, we could say, "Single and multifamily dwelling units." I mean, it's a little, you know. We'd probably have to change it throughout the whole document, but.
No, I don't know. I don't. Yeah, this does feel like an antiquated definition of family.
Well, at the time, it wasn't. I mean, that was the accepted, but of course, things have changed. And I did go through the statutes as much as I could, looking to see if even the state defined it. And of course, the state didn't say it's single as opposed. It was convoluted and I, if I recall correctly, because I did this a while back, it's still referenced by marriage or blood.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Or, or adoptage.
Or adoptage, yeah, yeah.
Or foster.
Mm-hmm.
That's adopted.
Foster. Adopt is not, fostering's fostering and adopting is adopting.
Yeah. Instead of basically saying, it's where a group of people live, period, you know? Especially in multifamily or, not to bring up a very bad subject, but for the roommates. You know, like college, college roommates sharing a house together. It's a single-family house, but.
Yeah, or unmarried couples.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I think the, the mortgage lenders and everything else still use the term, "Single and multifamily."
Well, could we just add on to this the, the, you know, between one and four unrelated people or one or more persons? Because that's what South Burlington did to kind of fix.
Yeah, but I think the four is kind of
Yeah.
wacky because, you know, I used to have ten and they were all related.
Yeah, exactly.
I only had nine.
One or more, one or more unrelated people or one or more, one or more unrelated or persons living or, I don't know.
I know, it gets real wacky.
Yeah, it does.
Do we even have to define that?
Which?
Who, who the family members are? I don't think so. I think it's just.
Well, except just this one only, this has to be, you have to be related in this one. So, I thought, so what are we trying to do? I thought.
We're trying to get away from the definition of family that we currently have and more or less define what a single-family house is.
I'm liking these two lines right here.
Not for any other reason, but and somebody comes in and says, "Well, what do you, what do you define as a family?" To be able to say.
Oh, that just opens a can of worms.
Yeah, it does.
Pinky worms.
Because they're, because they're, they have a different view of a family than you do. And I don't know if you want to start discussing that.
Right. So, my suggestion, if the board's pleasure, is we get rid of the term "family," that's in our definitions on page 41. And we just define single-family and multi, multifamily house, homes.
Yeah.
And let it go.
And I'm with Jill. I like those two lines she likes.
I guess I'm not sure I agree. Just because after I read the South Burlington one, it seems like, I, I guess I see why family, I don't know, who? You're getting people already asking you that, though? I guess that's why, if people are asking and then we don't have a definition, does that create more trouble than not having a definition?
No, they're, they're objecting to the definition we already have.
Oh, I thought that you were meaning that they were asking what, I see.
No, they're objecting to what we say in here, which is, and especially where it says, "Related by blood, marriage, or adoption."
Yeah, I disagree with that as well.
Yeah.
That's too limiting.
Yeah.
So, my feeling would be eliminate any definition of family and just put in, "Single-family homes is a detached unit." "Multifamily homes is residential units under one, under, as it says here, separate residential units within a single structure." And let it go.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, because you never know, you could have somebody that rents out three apartments and it's only one person and they sleep in three different apartments or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, we'll just keep it simple.
Okay, may I have a motion that we can change all of this?
I move that we remove the definition of family in our zoning regulations and just talk about a single-family, the definition of a single-family home and a multifamily homes that are on this sheet of paper, which is not otherwise marked.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Keeps it simple.
Kevin's second. May I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That's all I have on the agenda. Any other comments, I'll put them all in and I'll get out the revisions to everybody. Yeah.
Do we have comments from the public?
Yeah, I will, I open them to look at these documents. I see something from Shannon Titler. I haven't read the whole thing, but it looks pretty loaded if you guys.
A public comment?
Yeah. There's quite a few topics in here. I don't know if we should just all review it and then discuss it next, our next meeting?
Yeah, if it, if it's long, it might make sense if we could see it.
Yeah.
It's in, is it about the, the, is it specific to the zoning or?
Yeah. Zoning regulation review.
Got it.
648.
I kind of whipped up a draft on the farm animals when the village of Wallingford proper. If, and I thought if you guys took it home, you could mark it up.
Okay.
You know, unfortunately, I wasn't, didn't know that Jill would actually be here tonight, so I only made five copies. So, I will go without a copy because I have it stored at home.
Okay, well, but there's five of us here.
I don't know why I thought there were six all of a sudden.
Yeah, there's five.
There. I'm not well, but let me just say that. And it took me, I can't see. And my, yeah, essential tremors are out of control. So, just typing this took two hours because I was getting all these letters I didn't want.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
And we'll discuss that next month.
Yes, but I wanted you at least to have something to take home and kick around.
Okay.
Since they don't have Nixon to kick around anymore.
And Lucy, you made a motion to table any comments received?
Yes. Uh, yes, I will make that motion. To, yep, so we are able to review them.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Was that Tony?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So, was Shannon the only comment that we got, did it?
Jason Stone, next, could we possibly get some background on this regulation? Why is short-term rental prohibited in zoning? When was that prohibited? I don't know. This looks like it's from Jason at 7:25.
Jason Stone?
Yeah, you know, I...
Okay, so basically...
Everybody looked in their email.
I don't know with that, you didn't even sign, didn't even sign it, so... Okay. Um, I'll take a look at everything, and then...
Okay.
If it's, if it's not sent to the whole committee, I'll send it out, 'cause I did not have a chance to check my email from 6:30 on the Sa, this evening, so...
We do, we do need to schedule our next meeting, right?
Um, 14th of February, which is Valentine's Day.
This is for you, Lucy.
That would be the normal, unless people have special reasons not to meet on Valentine's Day.
I'm okay.
No objection.
All right.
Oh, I see.
So, unless there's any more discussion on anything, then I motion to adjourn.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we are adjourned.